Staff, the Parks and Recreation Commission and the City Council have discussed this project for the past couple of years and have identified three major benefits to the project. More use for the community of the facility, less maintenance and new revenues. The engineers estimate for the total project cost is 1.8 million dollars. 1.5 million dollars of that is for the field. The additional 300,000 dollars is for a separate restroom and snack shack facility. As the restroom snack shack facility can be added easily at any other point in the future, we're going to focus tonight's comments solely on the field. Towards the 1.5 million dollar estimate, the City Council has expressed an interest in using 1 million dollars of the Parks and Lou fund, which would leave a gap of 500,000 dollars to be closed via donations, sponsorships, grant funds, et cetera. Staff has been working with the nonprofit field users to identify sources and to seek funds to close that 500,000 dollar gap. We have not received any funds to date. We are waiting to hear from a few grant requests. Pee Wee Baseball has submitted an application for a 200,000 dollar community grant from PG&E. Staff has completed applications for a 2 million dollar California State Proposition 84 grant, and we have begun discussions with ESPN. Several of the field user groups have also suggested contributing to this project through a combination of league fundraisers as well as player assessments. If the City Council agrees with this approach, staff would formalize the leagues' contributions in a multi-year agreement between the city and the individual leagues. So that if the, we would assess the leagues a certain amount of money over a certain period of time, probably something based upon number of players in the league, so that the larger leagues would be paying a little bit more, or the groups that would be using the field would be paying a little bit more than some of the smaller organizations in the city. As there is no formal agreement in place with any of the leagues, and as we will not hear of the results of some of the grant requests until the spring, the only funding source staff has been able to identify, as of now, is the Parks and Lou fee, which has a current balance of 1.9 million dollars. Contribution of the entire 1.5 million dollar Park and Lou fee will not affect the potential to receive any of the grant funds that staff or the nonprofits have already applied for. Just to clarify, so if, if the city moves forward using Park and Lou fees with it, the grant through Proposition 84 is still available to us?
Excuse me, Randy? So what you're saying is if we decide to spend one and a half million dollars and we get another half a million dollars over a period of time from grants, we can backfill the in-lou account?
We can do that if we receive the grant funds, although there's no guarantee that those grant funds would come in.
Right.
So it's a little bit of a two-way sword, but they, but we still would be able to receive those money. We're still eligible. If the City Council chooses not to appropriate the entire amount from the Park and Lou fees at this time, staff would then recommend delaying the project until the funds are secured. And I will now turn the presentation over to Clara and Corbin to discuss field drainage and parking, and I will be available for questions.
No.
The parkman?
Nope.
It's just right here.
Should we go to commercial?
Was it put on here?
We got Will sitting here.
The techie's coming.
You guys score on that baseball game?
Nope.
Score on the baseball game?
I don't know if we have a map of the, if we have a map of the whole site, that'd be great. Here?
Well, I can do this one. This is, that's all community on me. I can do this one and I can do...
That's not going to help us.
Let's do this one.
Well, we can...
As you talk about, I can show it this way.
Okay. It's a little abbreviated map compared to what we had, what Will had put on there, or at least thought he had put on there. Oh, we're going to work the top of the drainage first? Oh, okay. We looked at the field as we typically do. A synthetic turf field has a drainage system that captures all the water that basically rains onto it, or if you use a quick cup or two, syringe the field and kind of cool it down. We took a look at how to drain the field, which you typically do in a situation like this, where we have a perimeter drain in the low side. This whole field, as a baseball field wants to, it drains towards the outfield. The infield, as it wants to, is pretty level for, for a proper field to play. Because of the depth between the infield and the outfield edge, we've got secondary drains in the middle, so we actually catch it in sections. And then, the way we're draining it now is it drains to the middle of the outfield to a low point, and then it drains to the, to the left-hand side of where the play structure is. We can see that.
Can, can you use the cursor?
You want me to go ahead? Yeah. It's just, just south of the, the blue, the blue play structure. And then at that point, we have a, because the elevation change between that elevation and the field and the manhole storm drain that then drains into the channel to the south, we have a sump pump that brings the water up to elevation and then pumps it into the manhole. We were asked to take a look at some other options, and, which we typically do in a situation like this, where we are, at this point, putting all the water into a hard line system. And the first system we looked at was a percolating system, where we would take all the water and, and actually detain the water and percolate it into the soil, give it a chance to, to percolate, and then once it saturates and comes to a certain point, at that point, it would then drain off and then find its way to a solid pipe system. Situation in this field is we've got a high water table by the blue building where the, the cover there for the play area, you're at 45 minutes past high tide, geared about five foot to the water table, and down by the low point of the field, where the Google turnaround portion is, you're around three feet. So if we did a percolation detention system, we literally would be putting water on top of water, and it wouldn't really go anywhere. One of the complaints that we heard with the existing fields, which would be the Lions' Field, Center Field, and then the, the baseball field, is that water drains from the Lions' Field into that Center Field and at times renders it useless. And what happens is, since it's a lower point in there where Lions' Field can be used, since the water's drained there, the center portion is not usable. So that option was kind of set aside as, as non-functional. The other would be to actually detain the water and retain it in a, in a tank system. And we were looking at, even working with the, the garden center, the garden, the neighborhood garden, and actually looking, going straight east-west, which is, which is outside the picture, and looking at an area along there where we could retain the water and actually pump it out and use it for the gardens. Looking at that, to retain one month's worth of water in a, and we're looking at a 10-year event, you're between 79 and 80,000 gallons. For the, the year, you're around, for this size field, you're at around 950 to 980,000 gallons of water. As you read in your report, the first, which is the smaller, which is retaining one month's worth, and then using it hopefully in the garden, and then allowing more rains to come in to fill it back up again, and then continue to use it as much as you could in the garden, which may lapse one or two months into the, the gardening season where you want irrigation. It, very large tanks, and you're talking around 200,000 dollars just for the tanks, the pump, the filter, to get it back up into the garden area. If we were to detain it and retain it for a year's worth of water, you're looking around 2 million dollars. And a lot of that cost is in the tank, and the, the pumps, the pumps actually get larger the further you get into the, the bigger tanks. But what, the situation we also ran into was you've got these large tanks, which would have to be long and, and below grade, because there's nowhere, nowhere to put it above grade. So you put it below grade, and now you've, you've compromised the water table. So it's going to want to push that tank up. So we would be doing some extensive pier work, concrete piers, and, and then some cabling to keep that tank in the ground, so it wouldn't start floating when it gets empty in the summertime, when the water table rises at high tide. So those are the three options we went through. The option at this point that we're using is to drain the field, capture the water, stop it from moving towards the Center Field, and then take that through a sump pump into the hard pipe system. The system drains, as you can see on this map, it drains to the south through First Street into the channel. And at this point, the, the channel, the capacity of the channel is wide open. When you go out there, it, when it's not raining, there's not a lot of water moving in there. In fact, it's rather stagnant. So the, the channel's got plenty of capacity. One of the concerns was that, are you going to move that water to the north up to Ag, Angus? And that's not the direction we're going. We're actually going the opposite direction. Parking, parking? Parking, okay. We can kind of use the same, you've got a, a handout here. Looking at the existing field, the synthetic turf is low maintenance, higher play. It does not increase the amount of play per game, because the square footage remains the same. In fact, the, the fencing and all is going to remain. What it does do, it, it provides extended play throughout the winter, or, or, let's just say, moister months where you would typically not be on your turf field because of the rain and the mud, and not wanting to turf your field for maintenance purposes, as well as just not playable in a baseball game or soccer. So one of the things we looked at was going in with a synthetic field, and with that, to take a look at the use of the field with conjunction with barrel airfield. And the first numbers that we put out were strictly based on the baseball field. And what, there are two other uses that we're looking at with the baseball field, which is soccer and flag football. So in looking at the, the numbers for the baseball, having two teams on the field, or four, four, four teams in the field, two teams in the field and then two waiting, so you have the ability to, to stage people to get ready to play the next game. You're looking at 45 people, and there's, there's a, a formula that we go through. We actually looked through a number of different studies, and they're actually very, very conservative, and we felt the numbers were way lower than you're going to get in a typical field. We talked to the, the users, and they pretty well confirmed those numbers, you know, the numbers you're looking at are more appropriate than numbers we had from other, other surveys. And so we're looking at a non, just a regular play, 45 people, that, that's coaches, parents, players, observers, and then 54 if you have a tournament. And what that does is includes nine people, if in fact, the restroom concession building was built, so you've got nine additional people to, to man the concession building, to be barbecuing and doing other things as necessary. So the, the 54 includes stalls for those additional cars, plus a truck to bring the barbecue and such. We went back later and took a look at soccer. Soccer, you are not in the stands, you've got people right on the field observing the game, so the numbers are higher. You have the ability to really bring out a crowd out there, and if you've been to a soccer game with your kids, you, you can really bring out a crowd. And so when we took a, the look at the numbers with the same formula, looking at observers, players, coaches and referees, we come in at a, a regular play at 34 people. When you get a, a tournament going, where you've got multiple teams on the field to be warming up, practicing, and then playing the game, you're around 62 people. And that also includes, you're basically 55 people, plus that includes additional people for your concession stands, if in fact that's built. Right now, if you look at the, the handout that you've got, looks like Will's trying to get the, the color in there. On the existing Lions' Field, to the south of the field, we've got 35 parking stalls, and then two ADA stalls. Also in use right now by Lions' Field is the, up above Lions' Field by the pump house, you've got 17 parking spaces plus one ADA. So, so basically that adds up, too much detail? Okay. So basically with the proposed, which is, I mean, the existing, which is the lighter color, you've got 55 stalls. With the other existing stalls that, that would be able to be used, would be right in front of the school, you've got an additional 37 stalls. Both these together equal 92 stalls. If we were to look at the soccer number, it's 62 stalls needed. We're looking at the possibility of the proposed stalls. On the school, parking a lot of 23 additional stalls. Okay, the red would be the additional, can't even see that. 23 stalls, and then the possibility in the future, if we were to do a joint use, or, I mean, I'm sorry, using the, the train station, which would be an additional 31 stalls. So with those numbers, we're beyond what we would need for even tournament play.
You said the train 31, or you mean 71?
I'm sorry, I'm looking, I'm looking up higher. 71 stalls, right. And that includes ADA parking. So with that, we, we are, with the baseball play, we, we can match our need with the soccer play on a tournament situation, we would need additional stalls.
What, what is the likelihood that the train, the train parking will, will remain and be available, once, you know, once the station is moved? I mean, is there, is there, is there a major agreement we have to, we'll have to get into, involved with, with the JPB or?
This issue was, this issue was raised with JPB two years ago, as part of the design process and negotiation process with JPB. JPB had made no final decision, and they are aware of the serious interest in reaching some kind of agreement with them on the use of the parking lot after the new station will be built, but those discussions are not finalized yet.
Any questions of staff?
Ken? We, we went in with presentation with drainage, and then we went into parking. Is there an issue with the parking? I know there was an issue with drainage, there's always a concern, and I've seen the emails and things, but the parking, I mean, are we just, is that just a presentation?
The purpose of the presentation tonight is to tie off the council's interest in receiving detailed information on both of those technical topics, the drainage and the parking. The issue before the council tonight for a decision is the schedule for the project, and as the director has outlined, we had previously been asked to bring this project back to the City Council before it, for a conclusion about the status of the fundraising in a manner, in a timeframe that would allow for a decision to be made about whether the project would move forward this year. We're at the point where that decision needs to be made, and as you've heard from the director, the funds anticipated, or the direction of the City Council to proceed and to secure funding through alternative sources under the, other than the Park and Lou fee fund for the remaining half million dollars needed for the project, has not been accomplished as of this point, and so the decision before the council tonight is really about the schedule for the project, whether to proceed with construction this year, and that would require the intent to use in Park and Lou fee funds for the full amount of the project, or for the project to be deferred until adequate funds can be secured to complete the project.
Ken?
Can we get a little more, I know the last time we discussed this, there was concern over the amount of the grant and the chances of getting the grant. What are, what can you tell us more about the chances of getting that grant? And, I mean, is it 2 million dollars or nothing? Is it, is it, do, will they give us something?
Do you want to discuss the Prop 84 grant? Or do you want me to? Go ahead. The grant through Proposition 84. Staff originally applied for a grant through Proposition 84 of 600,000 dollars, and we were not successful. However, that was before all of the engineering work and all of the detailed work was put into it. After more information was found and, and additional funds were made available through Proposition 84, staff submitted another grant to cover the entire amount. I don't know if we want to discuss the odds, I'm not sure I know that well enough.
I, there's really, I mean, really no way to say odds. We won't know till, I think, December or January, spring. We are on a shortlist. It all depends on, on which way they want to go and spend their money. They've got, we're in the second phase of it. They've got funds that would cover us, it's just a matter of if this project is chosen.
We, we applied for 2 million dollars. Educate me on grants, you know, grant acquisitions. I mean, if they look at the application and they say, oh, well, you've already got 1 million dollars in there, you know, and we're not going to give you the 2 million, maybe we'll give you half a million. I mean, is that a possibility? Or, like I asked before, is, is it 2 million dollars or nothing? You know, the application is for 2 million dollars.
I don't know. As far as Prop 84, I don't know if you can get part of it. I, I do know that one of the, the special things about it is that you can be appropriate the monies through the city and then pay that back, which is unusual. Quite many grants will not, they want you to not have the money to, to build the project.
Through the chair real quick, just because council member I bears on this. I, I think I'm hearing what he's also asking is strategically, is it best to ask for 2 million, or is it better to ask for 1 million, for example? Do it, does it improve our odds, because actually, we're asking for more than even cost for the project?
Yeah.
Somebody calling on me?
No. No.
Hi, Will Anderson, Staff Engineer, Public Services.
Right into the microphone, Will. Will, why don't you stand the podium? Be easier for you.
Will Anderson, Staff Engineer, Public Services. Yeah, as far as the grant application, Prop 84, the direction provided by the state was to pretty much apply for all, the entirety of the construction. They do not like to segment or partialize their funding. They want to make sure, if you get the grant funding, it's all going to be spent on the project.
Right. I, I guess the question that I have, well, the concern that I have is that if we say, let's go forward with this, I mean, we're really taking a chance. What is the disadvantage of not doing that and not starting this now? Is there a financial disadvantage? Is there a, obviously, we'd have to put the field off, but is there, what's the disadvantage?
There's a slight disadvantage financially if we delay the project. But I, in looking at the total scope of the project, I don't want to say it's a significant amount. We would lose the revenue that could be gained throughout that year. We would spend more time, on staff time, maintaining this field, which is not necessarily a true cost. It would mean deploying staff to other needed areas of the city, but we would not bring in, on additional staff.
But those costs are already budgeted?
The staff costs are budgeted, we do not bring on additional staff just for this, but we could better deploy staff to other sections.
We haven't already allowed in a budget for additional income because of the field?
We have not at this point.
Okay, all right.
We have not. The larger point would be, what are the construction costs? And are those going to increase if we delay the project for a year? And when I say a year, when I, when I previously said, you know, until the money's available, if the money's available within the next six months or seven months, as we would hope by obtaining the grants, the best time to do the work is the November period when the, when nobody's using the facility anyway. So that's why I'm kind of referring to this as a year as well. But it's the construction costs that are probably the most significant factor.
Is there a way to, if in fact you got the money in April, you could say, let's go, can we accommodate teams other places?
It's going to be difficult, but in the long run, the, the groups that will be using this field are very anxious to get a, a multi-use, all-weather field out here. We will work with them to the best we can. It may mean that we need to use other spaces very creatively for one season. We will try and move it as long and fast as we can, or find the next time when there may be less activity going on than full season. As we talked about the Prop 84 grant, the Pee Wees have said that, that they feel very comfortable with, in their discussions on the 200,000 dollar community grant. So I do want to raise that point, as well as we were talking about the full funding, because that's a portion of it as well.
But at this point in time, we have nothing in writing.
They have nothing that has been finalized on that as well.
Okay.
And, and their, and their intent is to apply that to the, the balance of the 1.5?
Correct.
Okay, so there's nothing, they're, they're not intending on putting that towards a concession stand?
No, that goes towards the field cost, the first 500,000.
And I guess the big question is, how firm is this 1.5 million dollar cost? I mean, it was estimated at 1.2, you know, and then, you know, and then a meeting later, it's 1.5. Is it because of all the drainage issues?
Correct, and this is a engineering estimate. Probably you will have a certain answer. Only just when the department will go out for bid, and we'll come back with a bid award exactly. It's very, it's a certain unknown, will depend on the bidding environment, what kind of proposal will come back.
Okay, see a member of the public wanted to speak? State your name and street address.
Alan Lubke, Fleetwood Drive. I have a couple of questions and a comment. Question number one, the initials JPB were mentioned. What is JPB, and what is the relationship of JPB to this project?
Okay, we'll get that for you.
You'll get it for me?
Right now, yeah. Continue with your questions.
Somebody's getting it? Pardon me?
Continue with your questions.
Oh, continue with my question. What is the composition?
a concession stand?
No, that goes towards the field cost, the first five hundred thousand.
And I guess the big question is, how firm is this one point five million dollar cost? I mean, it was estimated at one point two, you know, and then, you know, and then a meeting later, it's one point five. Is it because of all the drainage issues?
Correct, and this is a engineering estimate. Probably you will have a certain answer, only just when the department will go out for bid, and we'll come back with a bid award exactly. It's very, it's a certain unknown, will depend on the bidding environment, what kind of proposal will come back.
Okay, see a member of the public wanted to speak? State your name and street address.
Alan Lubke, Fleetwood Drive. I have a couple of questions and a comment. Question number one, the initials J P B were mentioned. What is J P B and what is the relationship of J P B to this project?
Okay, we'll get that for you.
You'll get it for me?
Right now, yeah. Continue with your questions.
Somebody's getting it? Pardon me?
Continue with your questions.
Oh, continue with my question. What is the composition of the infields? Is it, is it, is it, is this solid turf all the way through, or are there, and, and along that line, is the baseball field adaptable to softball? And the comment is, it's not too early in this process to seek out possibly additional users to make a little income. There are, there are, there is a national association of senior softball players that travel all over the world, and there's probably still some, somebody who does, who's taking Eddie Fainer's place. It's not too ear- early to solicit, you know, those, those kind of projects. I'm certain those teams would love to come somewhere very near to San Francisco and enjoy all the benefits of that. Okay, that's it?
Thank you. All right, J P B, Joint Powers Board?
The Joint Powers Board, and they are the group that operates lots of the transportation, which would include the train lot. So as we're talking about the parking at the train station, existing train station, the J P B is the authority that oversees the use of that lot. So J P B is Joint Powers Board. In terms of the composition of the infield, it would be the same type of material as the rest of the field, it would just be colored differently. So the whole thing would be a synthetic grass material. There would be, it would be seamless in terms of no bad hops or trip hazards for, for kids that are running across, but it would be brown synthetic grass on the infield, so that, that the children playing either baseball or softball would learn their positions better. If they, when they do play on natural grass fields or gra- fields with, with skinned infields, they would understand better where to play. So it's just the coloring, but the field is all the same. And this is in many different fields have this type of configuration. Red Morton Field in Redwood City is one of these. Skyline College has the same type of configuration, so it's, it can be used for all play, softball, soccer, baseball, et cetera. And there's different distances for the base pegs, so that different levels of baseball or softball can all play on the same field just by extending where the bases are. And your comment about King Eddie and adult senior softball, I'm a longtime fan of, of those teams, so I do appreciate those remarks. There are groups like that that do come around, they want occasional rentals. There's also other groups in the area, such as lacrosse groups, that are looking for field space, and those would be on a more regular basis. So when I say some of the, one of the losses or one of the disadvantages would be lost revenues, as I'm under attack here, lost revenues, those are the types of opportunities that we would be looking at. Some of the outside C Y S A soccer groups, or lacrosse groups, or other field users that are interested in the facility.
Regarding the, the other availability of grants, and if somebody mentioned two hundred thousand for P G N E, would you, we have an idea when that's going to be, when we're going to know about that?
That's the one that's, that Pee-wee baseball-
Okay.
...applied for, and that's their community grant. And my understanding is that they've been in discussions several times within, even the past week. And the grant would be made to Pee-wee baseball, but Pee-wee baseball applied on behalf of Pee-wee and the other nonprofits, such as San Bruno AYSO, and et cetera, et cetera, of the, those groups. The last I heard, the question was down to what type of recognition would be, would P G N E be receiving? And it would be from Pee-wee's baseball, not from the city. So if they were to put thank yous in their programs or schedules or things like that, that would be between those two agencies, we are not part of those discussions. But that's the level of detail that are at, that, that those discussions were at, which is why they were saying that they were very optimistic.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Rico?
I just want to get clarification on the report on the parking. So, am I reading this correctly, that there's an actual eighty-eight spots with a proposed going in with the school district for twenty-three? If I'm not mistaken. And then also another proposed fifteen. I'm, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to do, my math, is that when we were last here was a hundred, it was a hundred and thirty. And I'd asked for clarification on that. So I'm trying to understand, well, how many spots are we talking are parking that we could park today? exclude the proposed, because proposed are, have to enter into agreements and, you know, all of those things.
Well, we're looking at the yellow, is parking that we use today, and that's fifty-five. The additional that we can use is in the front of the school, and that's an additional thirty-one. And so that's actually six less, so you're at eighty-eight stalls.
Okay, so, all right, so it's eighty-eight that we have, and in hopes through various agreements, we could potentially get up to a hundred and twenty-six.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what's, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Questions? Michael?
Go ahead, Michael.
One of the things that's going to make- Okay. One of the things that makes the field more usable is the fact that it just stays drier, and I'm wondering, could we have, could we have had accomplished the same thing by just improving the drainage and maybe doing some grading improvements there and not having done the artificial turf?
Well, it's got to be irrigated, so you're going to have your, your moist times in the morning. When it rains, you could do drainage on it with a slit sand system, and what that's also going to do is increase your need for irrigation, it's going to drain faster. And as time goes on, there's higher maintenance with that, aeration and everything else. The drainage, as far as the grading, the way it is, you've, we've done a little bit with the infield and, and slope the outfield, but you're still going to have some very similar slopes that you have out there. Your turf is going to hold on to the water. When we talk about longevity or the, the season of play, when it comes to rainy times, or even just, you know, sprinkling times, quite often it's going to be too wet to play baseball out there. And with your high water table, when things do get saturated, it's going to maintain that water level on the surface for a long period of time, and then you're looking at evaporation, and for the high tide to go out, and for more perk to happen to get that water out of there. Well, as far as, yeah, good point maintenance, and synthetic turf field, you want to groom it. But beyond that, and the grooming re- relocates any of the, the fines that have been moved out of the, the rubber surfacing, that's been moved out of the way by play, compared to the, the maintenance on a, on a turf field, which, I mean, it's quite high. Comparably speaking, there's, there's no difference, I mean, there's no comparison. You're, what you're really looking at is the cost of field to install, whereas maintenance on the turf field will catch up to that.
All right. And just out of curiosity, if you had to compare, say, a natural turf field to a concrete slab to this stuff, where do they each rank in terms of permeability and how much of that water is actually getting back into the ground?
Concrete, none. The synthetic field, you're going to get, about three-quarters of that water is going to go off the field, so maybe twenty-five percent, whereas a natural field, on, if you take the field as it is, I want to say a hundred percent of it, except for the fact that they have really noticed a lot of the water, the soil saturates rather quickly, and a lot of the water drains off what they call centerfield, in between the two baseball fields, which is, they try to use that for cheerleading and, and, you know, football practice and things like that, and it just makes it unusable.
Okay. All right, and, and then getting back to the, the financial aspect of this, we, we have this Park and Lou fund, and really no other potential uses for it. You mentioned in the report, maybe the swimming pool, but it's grossly underfunded to even start thinking about that. Why not consider just using that money?
Well, that's what we're talking about.
So, I mean, really, it, it doesn't seem like there's any reason not to just commit to it if, because I, I thought a lot about this, and yeah, I mean, there are, you know, possibly, you know, other areas where we might have used it, but it's been sitting there, it hasn't been used. We could potentially put in a fee structure around the use of this field that could replenish a fund if we so decide to set it up that way, that could generate funds on an ongoing basis, and those funds would then not be restricted by our current regulations that's around Park and Lou type fees. So maybe making that commitment is, is the right thing to do at this point. I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay.
Well, if, if I can, if I can interject, Ken, can we get a, a little refresher on what the restrictions are of using Park and Lou fees? Because it's not just a general fund for using in Park and Rec facilities.
Right, that's correct. The Park and Lou fee fund is, is a development impact fee that is collected from new projects that increase the need for parks and recreation type facilities. In general terms, those fees, those funds can only be used for capacity-expanding types of projects that, again, expand the capacity and the opportunity for those development projects, the new residents to be accommodated at, at parks and recreation facilities. That's, that's the, in very general terms, the restriction. So they are not restricted for use as to types of facilities that they could be used for, so there is a fairly broad range of types of uses that would be subject to the city council's own policymaking.
So to say that it would, might be used, potentially used to a no- new pool, that doesn't increase the usage of the pool?
Expand the capacity-
Expand the capacity.
And the, and the opportunity for use. It certainly could be used for a, for example, if you're talking about a pool, just as a, as sort of a gross example, the utilization of the pool could be expanded both by its, its physical capacity, as well as the types of programming that could be accommodated at that facility, in a similar way to the assessment or the analysis that's been used in the deployment, the potential deployment of the funds for expansion of the capacity of the field utilization. I mean, again, we're not building a new field, per se, we're expanding the potential utility of that field, in this case, for all-season play, for different types of play, for, you know, soccer and softball and baseball, so it's, it's those types of considerations.
So, so as my colleagues, I mean, we're, one point nine million in the account right now, one million already earmarked towards this project, and a possibility of asking for another half a million to fund this project, and, which leaves us with about four hundred thousand. So the question is, what could that four hundred thousand leave us with? Or is there nine hundred, is there a nine hundred thousand dollar project that the city, you know, might be looking towards? And I guess what I'm hearing is that it can't go towards repairing the rec center. It can't go towards repairing or improving other fields necessarily.
Again, you'd have to make a careful assessment of the project on a, on a case-by-case basis. I, I wouldn't say that it couldn't be used. We've used Park and Lou fee funds for a variety of different types of projects throughout the community over the years, so I, without taking a look at the particular project, it would be difficult to, to either rule it in or out categorically. I, I think what's fair to say is that at the current time, there are no specifically identified projects that the city council has either contemplated or that have been proposed for use of Park and Lou fee funds. That said, there's always things that could and potentially should be receiving consideration, but it, it would be, as you indicate, a fairly small amount of money, particularly when you, you stack that against another community priority, which is the swimming pool.
And so lastly, is it true that the majority of this current Park and Lou balance is from the development that took away Carl Sandberg?
That is correct.
Through the chair, just, so I'm clear too. So Park and Lou fees could cover the pool, because you could extend its usefulness and offer more programs and activities, is that a possibility?
That's my understanding, ba- based on a very cursory analysis, yes.
Or if you wanted to go the dog park, if, I know that's been brought up with the commission, that would then be, because you're creating something new, or, so that would be a potential?
Potentially.
Okay. Is there anything, to the director? Yeah. Is there anything that the commission has discussed or contemplated, other than this one project, as far as Park and Lou fees? I know it's come up, I've, I think the last time I was on liaison, it came up about the Park and Lou fees, what to do, what not to do. Is this the only thing that the commission or people that have come to the commission have ever wanted? Is just this one topic?
Adding lights to the dog park would probably be the next one. That would be a capacity issue, since you would extend the hours of the existing dog park. As the city manager said, the swimming pool is one, I think the, a large, a, a more clear example of use for the swimming pool would be putting a dome over the swimming pool. Now, all of a sudden, you can use it for more years during the, more months during the year, and I think that would equate more to the synthetic grass field, where we're just adding more length of time throughout the year you can do it. So there are some, but as the city manager said, it, it really is a case-by-case example of how creative is the use there. But I, I don't think there's any, even been any other items that have come through the commission, maybe outside of the lighting system for the dog park, which is, which is like thirty thousand dollars, and they were trying to get that through donations.
So it, it doesn't sound like tonight we're really discussing whether we need to put the money into the synthetic field, or whether we need to put it into A B C project, which we haven't identified.
Right.
And there's nothing to say, keep our fingers crossed, I guess, that any grant money or donations we get couldn't be backfilling what we use for, to, to take the Park and Lou fees, we could backfill that and build that up again, is that true? Yes, that's not a problem. And I think-
That is true, you would not put them into the Park and Lou fees, you would establish a separate fund, as council, or as Vice Mayor Sellsar said, a separate fund for recreational CIPs-
Okay.
-so that it would have less restrictions, rather than back into Park and Lou fee, per se.
Okay, and I think, you know, I, I agree with the Vice Mayor. My feeling is, I mean, let's do it, there's a huge need for this, and it's going to be used all year round, and I think it's going to be a big revenue generator down the road, and what a great improvement for that big piece of land that's muddy half of the year. So that's my feeling.
Through the chair.
Irene?
Before we make our comments, I just have a question. With the, if we don't do the restroom and concession stand now, as we're doing all the construction part, is that going to be a problem if we add sewage and the, you know, plumbing and all that kind of thing? Electricity, is that? Is it better to do it now than later, or is it, is it-
It doesn't matter. At this point, we have, in the design, is the infrastructure. So the infrastructure for electrical, for water, it will be at, at the, it's designed right up to the restroom. The one thing that it will, is also designed, but will have to be added to, would, you know, cutting under the asphalt and doing the sanitary sewer hookup, but beyond that, everything's already included in the design. The nice thing about the site is that that restroom building, right now, is being located in a, in a dirt area where it's free and clear to be done in the future. There's, there's no restrictions on where, on now or the future.
Okay, I'm just wondering if it's, I mean, if we're going this far, it sounds like we are, that if we should just go hohog and just do it and have a fabulous facility down there, because I grew up in this area, the fields were horrible to play in then, a long time ago, and they're still horrible, and we haven't done anything down there through redevelopment or, or Park and Lou fees, and it's an area that's been, in my opinion, fairly neglected. So that's just a thought.
Just to follow up on your comment, if this would be your desire, this could be structured exactly the way I was mentioned with the prior project, this could be added as a possible alternative to the bid, if this would be your decision how to proceed with this? And depending how the bid would come in, you could make a final decision at that time, if you even want to contemplate that alternative.
That sounds reasonable.
Okay.
Ken? I was torn on whether to spend all the money. And I'm still not really prepared to spend all the money. I think the user groups need to have some buy-in also. And I think I'm prepared to vote on a 1.5 million increase. And then, quite possibly, that $200,000 that comes can be the... To the start of, you know, the new concession stand and restrooms. I'm convinced that we don't have, you know, a viable use for remainder, although, you know, maybe $400,000 can add lights to another facility, you know, or something, even, you know, for the dog park or whatever. But it doesn't drain... It doesn't drain the fund. And I think, obviously, if we wait a year, and the bids come in at, you know, at 1.7 million or 1.8 million, just for the... I mean, we're going to be kicking ourselves. So the time is to pull the trigger now, and I'm prepared to...
Through the Chair. I was also torn on this for a lot of the reasons. What I'm enjoying hearing is, when I was at the Park and Rec Commission meeting as liaison, it was just, "Let's use it." But here, there's more of a definitive plan. There's something in writing, and there is a thought process behind trying to have, as Councilmember Iberis said, buy-in and ownership from the community. And I think that's been my concern. It's just very easy to say 600,000, a million, a million-five. But I think it's critical that we look to ourselves and outside available grants and other aspects from our user groups, who give a lot already. And they have some very talented people. And I think when they get together, they not only have successful leagues, but I think they can have a successful field. So I'm prepared for the 1.5. I'll go back to the parking, just because I really want us to work on that. We have 88, not 130. And really, if we were going to tell a homeowner, or if we're going to tell a business to go ahead and develop, we would make sure that they had adequate parking before it was approved. So again, I want the city to lead by example, and I want to make sure we have the adequate parking, so it doesn't affect the neighborhood down there. And I would say, we have done something down there. We have new play equipment down at Lyons Field, so we... There has been something done down there. It was a little bit ago, but we have done that. So again, the parking. I don't want to harp on it, but I think it's the right thing to do, and it's not fair to the community if we don't. And I know we have to enter into agreements, and not even the... With the 71, but in the others. I'd like to see that sized up, too. Very important to me. Because obviously, if we don't get those, according to these numbers, it doesn't work. And your own numbers say it. So again, I'm prepared for the 1.5. But I really want to encourage and want to see that the user groups and what is in the staff report really be gone after. And I think with the Park and Rec Commission's passion and dedication toward this, I think, and I will say, they will come back with funds that will go back into unrestricted capital improvements for recreation activities.
So do we need a motion on this, or do you want a consensus of direction?
It would be helpful to have a motion. It's a pretty important decision, so we would appreciate that.
Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
What's so moved?
The motion is?
Oh, clarify. We're going to go, just go ahead.
One and a half, one and a half million dollars from the Park and Lou fees towards this project.
I'll second the one and a half.
Motion is second. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
As an addendum, Clara, you said that you could do the construction proposal in the sections, so you have the restroom. I'd like to see that.
Yes, I think that's understood.
Thank you.
Good.
And just as a...
The one and a half million.
Just as a point of clarification, if at some point, one or more of the grants are granted, and we get that money, would then... I imagine that because of the way we write the grant, that money has to be used for this project, and then we would not use the Park and Lou funds, and those would remain intact, rather than us saying, "We're spending this money now. Let's replenish some other fund." We don't get that flexibility, I imagine.
Yeah, I think that's true. And it may depend on the timing of the funds, but I think you're correct. We certainly hear and understand the council's interest to achieve a situation of maximum flexibility in the use of funds that may come into the city's possession. And we will certainly do that. I think there are a lot of moving pieces here that would need to be evaluated before we could say for certain whether that could be accomplished immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great.